Okay, thank you. Commissioner Albrecht, would you please give us the sign? Any pledge of allegiance, please?
If a storm comes, we take the flag.
Okay, where to go?
It's at the courthouse.
Okay, pause.
Want to get one from my office, fast?
I think we can probably imagine one.
On the wall.
There you go, there we go. All right. Here we go. All right, there we go. There we go. "To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, that's...
Funny to be a flag. Really weird.
Just one of these not flags. Clerk, please call Roble.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Lodes.
Here.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Here.
Commissioner Marchand.
Here.
Commissioner Taylor.
Here.
Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Soleo.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment with resolutions only?
Seven seconds.
For who's that? On favor?
Hi. Anybody like to make a comment? Resolutions only?
Sure enough.
State your name and your address, and then you have five minutes.
My name is Montre Haddon. I am a lifelong resident of Cumberland County. I have a question as far as these new positions that were created. I see that, wait a minute, crap, I didn't expect to go so soon, I'm sorry. I'm just coming right from work. The, what are they, deputy, some business, some administrators or something, going to be placed? Because I know we're supposed to be, I work for the Division of Social Services, and we're supposed to be getting someone there.
I think that was pulled off the consent agenda.
It was pulled off?
That's off.
But it's also, is it pulled off first on the red?
Okay, well, I'm just going by what I saw on the internet. Okay, so that's all.
It's not on that agenda.
No, it's on the one I had because I posted it last night. Yes, that's why.
Yeah, that's pulled off.
Okay, do you know when it's going to be brought back?
Possibly the 23rd, we're not sure yet.
Okay, all right.
Anyone else?
Seeing that none, make a motion, please.
I'll send you back.
On favor?
Hi.
Resolution 2024-51, resolution amending resolution 2023-55 entitled resolution awarding a contract for providing various social services for the Cumberland County Youth Services Advisory Council Committee for Living Enrichment Program. Do I have a motion and second?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-52, resolution amending 2024-6, resolution designating regular monthly meetings. Do I have a motion and second?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-53, resolution amending resolution 2024-31, appointing commissioner members to planning board. Do I have a motion and second?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-54, resolution authorizing transfer of conveyance of a county department of corrections narcotics detection K9 known as E to Officer George Tucker. Do I have a motion and second?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Resolution 2024-55, resolution appointing assistant county council assigned to the Division of Social Services. Do I have a motion and second?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow.
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Soleo.
Yes.
Director, the question is, are our resolutions there, is there going to be a consent agenda, or is this just, is there consent agenda?
At this point in time, there's no need for consent, but I say that we should probably still continue with practices done prior.
On January 23rd, there will be a consent agenda?
Yes.
Number 14839, resolution amending resolution 2022-684, a resolution exercising second and final option to renew contracts and approving change orders to contracts for providing, amending, remove, ascenda as to late enhancement activities program intervention category. Number 14862, amendment to resolution 2023-727, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Family Development for the calendar year 2024, for the provision of social services for the homeless. Number 14863, resolution authorizing grant applications for FY 2024, next generation 911 grant, $35,000. Resolution 14873, resolution authorizing the award of a non-parent open contract to provide 250 net motion, 250 net motion licenses for proprietary software for Cumberland County 911 communication center. Number 14875, resolution approving change order number four to contract for engineering service support for the P25 700 MHC digital front radio system, pre-qualified per RFQ number 19-50 as needed architectural and engineering services.
Director, can we ask that our emergency management coordinator to come up and talk about these three things?
Absolutely.
Especially the last one, number five, the 14875, so.
Good evening, Gabriel Scarborough, Cumberland County Emergency Management Coordinator. I do apologize if I don't have the agenda in front of me.
You probably know, you probably know which ones these are. It's just the 911 grant, it's just a grant received for judicial.
The 911 grant is Mrs. Bowen, she can probably explain that better than I can. The change order number four for the contract, the engineering services, we've been having some delays due to Motorola and the planning process of what we've been trying to accomplish with our last three infrastructure tower sites that are remaining to finish our project. So we have two towers remaining, one additional tower, not so much a tower, but on top of the JC Plaza, there's still more engineering work that needs to be done and figuring out and managing those projects along with everything that goes along with them.
The system's working though, it's just...
Correct.
...to make this better.
Correct, yes.
When we put these three in, and the reason why the one, the Millville Tower, is because the City Hall would turn up.
Right. Initially, the initial plan was going to be to put a 40-foot tower, steel-erected tower on top of Millville City Hall after doing a little more investigating and running into an old engineer, he showed us some cracks in the building that were, we felt it wasn't the best place to put that tower. So we've moved that back over to JC Plaza where our current equipment is located now on the VHF system. So we need to finish that out. We've been provided a room that was once used by Cricket Wireless, so we were able to secure a private room that we're going to be able to have all of our county equipment in, that's not going to be, as it currently is, accessible in the penthouse of JC Plaza. So it's definitely a bonus moving there. The Greenwood site, we're getting closer to going for the necessary documents to begin construction out there. The city of Vineland, we, the board approved last year to purchase a fence to put around a new impound lot, that's been completed, the Vineland police have moved all their equipment out of where our tower site is going to be. So Public Works actually went in and cleared the area, which saved us some money for where the tower is going to be, and now we're waiting on the permitting process for that. We're looking at, conceptually, a June completion of this project, which has been going on for many of you have been around for quite a while, this has been an ongoing project, and we're nearing the finish line. Currently, we have all of our county-run EMS units actually communicating with the 911 Center on the 700 radio system. We're in the process of installing radios and handing out portables to our fire departments, which we're hoping within another month or two will be able to get them off of the old system. The reviews are fantastic, we had a meeting last night, I gave a report, Commissioner was there, and nobody was complaining. It's the first time in a long time, things are really starting to get exciting with this project and being close to the end.
I just got another question. The $84,000 increase, do we feel, well, you may not be the person to answer this question, but do you feel this might be the final increment?
I believe it is. I think this is going to take us to the end. And we've been asking that, you know, this needs to be the end, to be honest with you. So there's a lot of things, they're reconciling bills and things of that nature for us, they found a pretty large sum of money discrepancy in one of the change orders that'll be coming to you in the near future, which saved us quite a bit of money. So with their help, we're definitely going in the right direction if we were to approve this money.
Thank you.
Commissioner, are you satisfied? So June is the deadline, according to, they told the director.
That's the goal.
So end of June, June 30th?
June is the goal.
June's the goal.
Great, thank you for that.
That's what we're looking forward to.
This will be all the money, these guys will be paid, we'll all be doing, this will be radios and everything.
I hope so, my life will be a lot easier. And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right, thank you.
All right, that's good, thank you.
Director.
Yes, sir.
The 84 was strictly for the change of the towers, I just want to make sure I understand it, going from City Hall to the plaza, is that correct?
It's for three sites. It is for finalizing the plans and the construction at JC Plaza. Finalizing the plans and the construction and implementation of Plum and West Avenue in the city of Vineland and the tower site in Greenwood.
What kind of increase did they expect from going from City Hall to the plaza? What are they looking at?
We've been currently trying to get those numbers, and VCOM is trying to work with Motorola. Motorola is the group that is actually building the towers, so these are more the engineers that are overseeing the construction, the documents, the bills, and everything else that goes along with that.
Okay, so is that included in this 84? That's my question.
VCOM is...
VCOM, yes.
Yes, the one that pays.
To get us...
So in other words, this is the last of it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
For the consulting, yes.
Perfect.
All the other builds will be paid too, right? All the construction, all...
Once it gets done and reconciled.
That has nothing to do with this addition for VCOM?
No.
I thank you very much, Mr. Sorrow.
And if I may ask, the board, our emergency operations center is open, so would it be okay if Director Bowen and I head back to handle the storm?
Go.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Scarborough.
Hi, everybody. I'll answer on the next-gen 911 and the net motion, that's currently what you guys have here tonight, the additional 250 licenses, that is for the fire and EMS to have their mobile CAD, their computer aided dispatch, in each of their trucks and at their stations. So they can view that, they have that now with our current CAD system. So this is going to be part of flex, which we've already started going through between the 911 center and the Sheriff's Department. For the next-gen 911, remember, we pay the fee to Verizon, and instead of them doling the money out, they created the next-gen grant for funding, and this is a great opportunity, and one of the items is GIS. And in 2026, 2027, Cumberland County will need to be prepared for that, for the next generation 911. So I am putting in for that, with your approval, to upgrade our GIS, okay?
Are we, are we looking to do any interns from the Royal University with GIS at all? Because is our system still out of whack, or is it much better than it was?
The GIS portion would be under planning, they have the GIS coordinators.
All right, I'll answer that question, you guys get it, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. It's really has nothing to do with this, but that's, are you, are we looking for interns to help?
Is the GIS...
We're always looking for interns. So a GIS intern would be phenomenal. Our GIS coordinator is out on a medical issue, so, yeah, certainly anyone that is available to help would be phenomenal.
Have we asked, have you put a request up before?
Well, we participate, as you know, we participated in the summer internship program that's run through workforce development, and we are in communication with them on participating again this year.
The last part is, is the GIS system is, had issues, the Sheriff's Department had issues with it, is it better, has it been improved at all, they've worked, you know, the mods, pages?
Right, so the challenge is that it was a GIS component that was being utilized for emergency services, which was not within the scope of our department, and so we were not aware that that existed, and we do not have the expertise in our particular department to handle the emergency services component.
Director, why I'm asking the question is that...
Yeah, I see what's happening.
...we're sitting 10 miles off an address, and I see...
They can't triangulate properly.
Yeah, they put a mark, and they're off.
All right, let's approach that in the future.
Yep.
Okay?
Just so the other commissioners know, that we had the Sheriff's Department show here, and the system that they were working with, they wanted to give back because it was inaccurate. Well, if you don't GIS, if you don't start, if you don't, if you don't put the first point right, the second point on top of it is off, the one above that is off, and again, just build, build, build. So you gotta, you gotta do it right the first time and build from there. That was the question at the back, are we, have we attacked that problem or tried to overcome that problem? It's on your scope.
And again, I believe the grant that Dawn is applying for will address that to some degree, but I don't know the details of that grant. Mary?
14878, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for supplying and delivering office supplies for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System identifier number 181 CC, CCPS bid number 21-71. 14879, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for providing commissary services to the Cumberland County Department of Corrections RFP number 22-05. 14880, resolution changing custody of petty cash for the surrogate and the sheriff. 14881, resolution authorizing an agreement with the New Jersey Judiciary, Cumberland lost its sale in visiting for the provision of juvenile youth services program. 14882, resolution authorizing purchases from estate contract vendors. 14883, resolution canceling expired contracts for January 2024 covering materials, services, and supplies. 14884, resolution amending resolution 2018-174 and authorizing execution of amendment number two to ACE funding agreement for the Cumberland County Salem Cape May County Workforce Development Board. 14887, resolution awarding professional services contract for providing bond council services for the County of Cumberland RFP number 23-62. Resolution 14888, amending resolution 2023-407, resolution authorizing grant application and acceptance of the FFY 2023 Emergency Management Agency Assistance Grant. 14889, resolution awarding fair and open professional services contracts for providing litigation services for the County of Cumberland RFP 23-67 and authorizing re-advertising for the request for additional proposals. 14891, resolution awarding fair and open professional services contracts for providing labor council and employment law services for the County of Cumberland RFP 23-66 and authorizing re-advertising for requests for additional proposals. 14892, resolution awarding fair and open professional services contracts for providing legal services as defense counsel for the Cumberland County Workers Compensation Program RFP 23-69 and authorizing re-advertising for requests for additional proposals. 14893, resolution awarding fair and open professional services contract for providing council services for the Cumberland County Construction Board of Appeals RFP 23-64. 14894, resolution rejecting all proposals received for providing council services for the Cumberland County Planning Board RFP number 23-68 and authorizing re-advertising for the request for proposals. 14898, resolution awarding fair and open professional services contract for providing legal services for criminal defense for the County of Cumberland RFP 23-65 and authorizing re-advertising for requests for additional proposals. 14899, resolution authorizing shared services agreement with the City of Millville to provide senior citizen meal assistance. 14900, resolution authorizing reassignment of a matter of disciplinary appeal of Victor Bermeza pending in Superior Court of New Jersey, Health Division A-002411-20. Do I have a motion and second to open public comment for new business?
I just wanted to mention one more thing that may be coming on the agenda for the 23rd. So tomorrow, the, yeah, tomorrow the council will go down, just going for the local finance board for their sewer project. So assuming that everything passes with the finance board, there may be ordinance consistent with down has to do with, for the board of county commissioners as well. So I'll contact Mayor Mike Bronson, because they want to also kind of re-present everything to this board and the public here, just to give everyone updates on the project. So that may be coming, but I'll circulate an email to all commissioners tomorrow once we have an idea.
Director, can we get an explanation of the die of the judicial, juvenile judicial for the 50th juvenile sale?
Chuck Alban will probably answer car. I think Chuck may be in the ramp. Is he on?
He might be on line.
Can you speak for him?
Yeah, I think he was weathered in unless he's...
He was trying to drive home, but...
Was he on?
I am.
I won't stop on your joke.
Okay, Chuck, go ahead.
Adam.
Okay, could you repeat the question?
It was all the, the die 14881, it's about the juvenile with Cumberland sale loss and revenge.
That's an issue, provision of...
This is Niles' department.
Okay, yes, there's, this is not a resolution that I was involved with, it must be something that's originating, I'm thinking out of the prosecutor's office, but I'm not sure if he's there to respond.
Ms. Niles has emerged. Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Alban.
Melissa Niles, Department Head for Cumberland County Department of Human Services. So this resolution is in reference to the additional funding that we receive under JDAI, Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiative in partnership with Prosecutor Jennifer Webb-McRae's office. So this is accepting the $120,000 so that we can provide various services for the youth and also the shared service agreements. Some of the programs involve, it's designed to improve and strengthen the relationship between probation officers and the youth that are under supervision. So part of that funding will pay for overtime for the probation officers to go with the youth to various outings, and they do college tours, and they go to various outings, and we're working on a special project that will be revealed soon, so that's what that is. It's, the funding comes from Juvenile Justice Commission.
Ms. Niles, Ms. Niles, is that split between three ways with Kelly?
No. It's just because we're a visnage.
That's just, it's just our portion.
That's the program where they go once or twice a week, and then they have the graduation, correct? With Gary Bryant and those guys, is that, that's not the same?
We have a lot of different programs. Go ahead.
Please.
Good evening, Jennifer Webb-McRae, Cumberland County Prosecutor. So I chair the Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. It's a state program, each county has a local council, and because we participate, we get $60,000 a year. If we meet our objectives, set criteria, we get an additional $60,000, which is called incentive fund. So we've gotten that every year except for one year in the beginning. We use this money for programs that help the youth that are on probation succeed moving forward. So there is, they go on trips, there's a college tour, and we also do activities, life skills, and they also have probation orientation.
What age groups, by the way?
It's youth on probation, so I would, most of the time, I would say 14 to 17 or so, but they could be younger if they were identified. And they get some incentives to go on these trips if they comply with all of their conditions of probation.
Right, to give you an example, there's a youth who received what we call super incentive because he was very exemplary in his compliance, and he exceeded, he wasn't just compliant, he actually seemed to benefit and grow. So we were able to provide him with a stipend to pay for driver's license school, because a lot of youth, you know, they don't have that opportunity to get that practice before they turn 17, so we were able to fund that for him, and so it's moments like that that keep us going.
Another example of an incentive is, I recall in the past, we paid for youth to get their lifeguard certification so that they could work in the summer, things like that.
And we also paid for a young lady to get her hair and nails done for the prom before.
That's very important. All right, very good, thank you. Any other questions on resolutions? Commissioners?
I'll have questions next week, I'll have to get a chance to read all that stuff, so...
I have a motion and second to open public comment for new business.
Seven.
Second.
On favor?
Hi.
Anybody who's speaking to public, five minutes, state your name.
Melissa Niles, Department Head, Cumberland County Human Services, I live in Vineland, New Jersey. I just want to make everyone aware of a new initiative that finally is, it launched on December 23rd, and it's Inspira is the one who is the lead agency, they partnered with our department and recovery coaches, we call it the Bufonorphine Initiative, Bufonorphine is the scientific name for Suboxone. So what the program is, and it's countywide, it's the first one in the state to be countywide. So whenever EMS responds to a person who is in need of opiate reversal, Narcan, on the scene there, offered the opportunity, it's called Suboxone induction, to receive on the spot Suboxone to help them, because when a person receives that medication, the way they wake them up is it puts them in extreme protracted withdrawal, and it causes...
Make everyone aware of the new initiative that's finally...
I'm sorry, can you mute her one moment, please? Wow, that was a long delay.
That was a delay.
Anyway. So I forget where I was with that, but the medication, the intention is to reduce the calls, the amount of calls that EMS have to respond to overdoses, because often when a person is woken up from a Narcan reversal, they go back and use again, or the Narcan wears off and they go into an overdose, so EMS are responding over and over. And also, most importantly, to provide the person with this substance use problem, the opportunity to initiate in recovery. And so on the scene, the advanced life support will initiate the Suboxone, and while they're waiting for the medication to take effect, they're also, they contact one of our recovery coaches, because they're available 24 hours, and they consult with one of our recovery coaches, and we help them make their next day appointment with a medication assisted treatment doctor so they can continue receiving... so they can continue receiving their medication. So it's not just like they're going to get medicated on the spot and then left hanging. They get medicated on the spot. Plus they get connected to a doctor within 24 hours. There's a virtual option and in person. And they get linked to the recovery coach. And it's free. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you.
You've never done this, this is the first time that you've done this.
So Camden County, through, they have a program through Cooper, but it's just Camden. So Cumberland County is the first county to do it countywide.
Anyone else? Oh, okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jen Brenner. I'm the director of the Cumberland County Library. I stood before you in September asking you to support a $3 million grant for a new library to be built in Marie's River Township. I am happy to say that we have been selected to receive that grant. We have, yes. Woo, everybody, yay! So we're just starting now and going through the different process through the state library to dial our i's and cross all our t's so that we can get the money and get started. I look forward to working with the board and working with my board and working with all the departments that have given me their letters saying they're going to work with me to get a library down there. It's definitely needed. We ran an internal statistics report from our library and it shows that Marie's River Township residents, only a handful of them, literally, you can count them on your hand, use the current Cumberland County library because of the distance it takes, there's no transportation. And it's one of the areas that is lower, in the lower end of our literacy in Cumberland County. So we're looking forward to going there and doing the best that we can. So just want to inform you, if you have any questions, I'm always around, so.
Just to add that this, what it was targeted, that Boris River Township, we called, it's where our commercials right next doors, that as was said, that there is no library system down there. Port Norris is a little one. And it's not just meant to be a library. When it's a library, this is a building that will help. When we first talked, it put bathrooms up front, lavatories up front. So if we have tourists, they could actually use the facility to wash their hands and go before they go back up.
Different departments, too, but.
Different department, that's right. Office that, we could have people outreach and it would have offices that they could sit there and be received instead of being all the way up here. So this is really a well-rounded building, including programs for the kids that would take place. Because I think the property we're looking at is three acres. So, and I have plenty of space to find a place to outreach for kids and stuff. So it really was a well-conceived idea when Jen brought it up. And Boris River has grabbed it. And also, the mayor of Commercial Township has also grabbed it. It's something special, so it's kind of neat, so.
Very good.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jen. Anyone else?
Motion closed. Second.
Hold favor.
Aye.
Three resolutions for session. Resolution 2024-51, Resolution Amending Resolution 2023. Resolution 2024-56, Resolution Dividing A Meeting Not Open To The Public In accordance With The Provisions Of The New Jersey Senator Byron and Fair Urban Police Meeting Act, NJSA 1044-12, Matters Relating To Purchase, Lease, Or Acquisition Of Grilled Property Or The Investment Of Public Funds, Matters Relating To The Employment Relationship.
Director, before we go into closing, I'd bring one other point is that the project that this board, the Buck Street County Building we had, that we sold to the builder, today they closed on that. We're going to receive half, which was decreed, $75,000 of the 150 they got for. The goal was the economic development for that property, which will be raised. And the next spot is the pole waterfront, their city hall.
That's good news, especially.
So I told Jeff, he just loves to drop it to swap people.
Perfect.
But it's a good thing.
That's a long process.
It's not, they're vacant anymore.
It's not, yeah, so that's, and it's a bit of private hand. So it will be put out on the tax rolls, so it's good.
Very good, another plus. There we go. Time clear?
Motion in second, one minute, second session.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sorrow?
Yes.
Commissioner Marchand?
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Soleo?
Yes.
City Attorney for.
Hold favor.
Aye.
Here we go.